This meeting of the Clarksville Montgomery County Board of Education, when they all come to order, will all stand, set a pledge of allegiance and have a moment of solace. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item tonight is point of pride awards. Dr. Lynn Vetter?
Yes, I'd like to welcome our chief communications officer, Anthony Johnson, to deliver tonight's points of pride.
Good evening, board. Although it is summer break and we know lots of students are out relaxing or doing, I'm sure lots of reading and catching up, we're proud and thankful that we have students here tonight to receive some points of pride. I do want to mention that at the T double S double A spring fling, we actually had several winners. Some are here tonight and some we will recognize in August based upon scheduling conflicts. But first, if I could have the Clarksville High School baseball team along with their coaches and administrator representatives to please come forward. As they come forward, I'm going to read their names. Aiden Claret, Benton Barksdale, Braden Taylor, Carter Hedrick, Christopher Abernathy, Cooper Nevin, Dalton Byrd, Dawson Smith, Drew Hawkins, Dylan Wicks, Emery Garten, Holden Lanham, Jack Wyatt, Jackson Brenner, Jackson Reese, Braxton Weatherford, Caden Pleasure, Keaton Anderson, Kirk Weatherford, Corbin Reynolds, Mason Stewart, Michael Moore, Noah Baggett, Porter Murph, their head coach Hetland, and assistant coaches Hams, Hayes, Kirkland, and Robichaud. As you may have seen in the news, this team made history. From Clarksville High School, the most runs scored, most wins, best winning percentage, and the first runner-up title for the school. They were the T double S double A 4A district and region and section champions and the state runner-up. And if you watched the game, if you got to be there or you were on the Game Changer app like me, it was a great game and they played their hearts out and we're very proud of them. Congratulations, Clarksville High School. All right, and next from Kenwood High School, if Marie Jones along with any coaches and admin representatives that are here, could please come forward? At the spring fling, Marie Jones won third place in the T double S double A state track discus competition. And if you've never tried to throw a discus, it's a very challenging thing to do, so congratulations to Marie. And next from Kirkwood High School, if Kelton Cantrell along with administrators and coach representatives could please come forward? Kelton was the semifinalist at the T double S double A state tennis boys singles championship. Congratulations, Kelton. And from Northeast High School, if Tayana Hamilton could please come forward along with admin representatives and coaches? As she makes her way up, I will share that she won fourth place in the T double S double A state track high jump competition. Congratulations, Tayana. And that concludes this evening's points of pride.
Next will be public conversation. We have two people signed up to speak tonight. First speaker is Ms. Rachel Susanna Butler. If you would make your way to the podium. If you would, when you reach the podium, hit the button on the silver button on the front that will turn your microphone on, the timer will display. It will blink again to blink whenever you have one minute to go and automatically close off when you're finished.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address the board. My name is Suzanne Albright Butler. I am a fifth generation Clarksvilleian. In fact, my grandmother was raised in a home just down the street here on Gracie Ave. I've seen our city grow in leaps and bounds and it continues to evolve and progress. I love Clarksville. I also have three children in CMCSS public schools since 2016. This is not a political stunt. I'm not a woke liberal leftist as dismissive comments have suggested. I'm a mom who supports and believes in public education. I wanted to remind you that you were elected to serve a diverse population of students. At the April meeting, a member of this board sent two cronies who quite literally stood here and trashed public schools in front of students, parents, and educators that you serve. There are serious issues at hand plaguing our students and schools. When I asked my seventh grader what challenges she faces at school, she said the number one thing is fighting and bullying. They've already had locker privileges removed and now they're escorted to their classrooms in single file lines by their teachers, eerily representative of a prison. On a recent high school tour for my upcoming ninth grader, the sophomore student who hosted us, said that she avoids using the restroom all day at school due to vaping and bullying. My eighth grader says that some students are so hungry, they will go around the cafeteria asking people if they're finished with their lunch so that they can eat leftovers. The same eighth grader has a teacher who personally doordashes food to her students over the weekend because she knows they won't eat otherwise. Several of their teachers work as servers and have night jobs to supplement their income, leaving them even more exhausted and depleted the next day. Their restroom at school was out of soap for days due to lack of supply or lack of custodial staff to replenish it. At the graduation ceremony at Kenwood Middle, the roof was leaking so badly in multiple places, parents and visitors were asked to move seats. As money is budgeted for more schools and new schools are built and that is needed, I am here for the often forgotten and sometimes neglected schools of North Clarksville. Things are broken. So, how can you claim to be for public schools when you are also actively working to dismantle and disparage the very things that help our students? There is more than one member on this board who has made public transphobic comments which affects the students and communities you were elected to serve. Some on this board have sought to eliminate DEI. DEI is not just about color as some pundits would have you believe. It includes accessibility like ramps, curbs, and accommodations for neurodivergent children. Measures that help ensure the playing field is level and success is attainable for all students. You cannot claim to be the voice of your district when you're actively marginalizing vulnerable communities such as persons of color, neurodivergent children, and LGBTQ persons. You cannot say you're for public schools at your night job and then in your day job, promote, pass, and prepare legislation that diverts funding and students away from public schools. This board should be an apolitical place where the needs of students and educators are prioritized. The Tennessee Board of Education Governance Policy is adopted by CMCSS. It is written that members will at all times represent the entire school community and refuse to represent special interests or partisan politics. Yet, when confronted with this blatant conflict of interest, Mr. Mayberry was asked on Facebook if he would resign and he said, quote, "I'm simply finishing my term to make sure the seat stays Republican," end quote. I am calling on this board to pass a resolution where a school board member cannot concurrently hold two publicly elected positions. This is a simple way to help ensure that members on this board have Clarksville Montgomery County students' best interests at heart. I'm calling on you, the board members, to remember the population that you serve, even if they may not look like you, talk like you, or vote like you. They deserve a voice too. So I leave you with the question, are you for public schools or not? Thank you.
Next speaker is Amanda Frost. Ms. Frost, again, press the right front silver button, it'll turn the mic on. You'll have five minutes. We'll begin, the light will begin to blink when you have one minute to go and we'll go silent when your time is up. You may begin.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amanda Frost. I spoke last month and ran out of time, so I'm back and hopefully a little bit more condensed. I'm a parent of three children with varying needs in our school system, a professional working in behavioral intervention, and a community member deeply invested in both the success and accountability of our schools. Two months ago, someone said our schools suck and why would they change it if they don't have to to address the lack of voucher support? That still sticks with me because we have some of the most incredible teachers and professionals in this district barely scraping by while the system they work in refuses to change. I'm here to talk about the systemic neglect of students who need behavioral and emotional supports. I'm asking where is the investment in our kids' mental health? Where are the trained interventionists, the trauma-informed practices, and the support for staff being asked to carry escalating needs with nothing but burnout and good intentions? I'm not talking about district intervention lists, by the way. I'm talking about the ones that stay in the classrooms and schools. Too many students are being funneled out of classrooms for being disruptive when what they really need is regulation, redirection, and real support. Too many parents are being told their child is fine while behaviors are ignored, interventions are delayed, and data is manipulated in line with district training from the top down. Not the student's reality. I have children with IEPs and 504s. I've watched those protections be treated like paperwork and not lifelines. I've watched teachers try their best with no real resources. I've watched administrators weaponize the policy instead of using it to serve the children. This isn't a speech to bash teachers or staff. I know many of them are just as frustrated. This is a demand for better systems. Systems where diagnosis isn't dismissed just because a kid, a child doesn't look autistic enough. Systems where parents don't have to record every meeting and cross-check data to make sure we can prove that our children are struggling. Systems where parents, sorry, systems where the response to a meltdown isn't suspicion or isolation or parent blame. Systems where teachers aren't forced into roles beyond their job descriptions and where they are properly staffed and supported. This isn't about my kid, it's about yours. It's about the kids in the back who stopped asking for help. The ones who lashes out because they don't know how to ask for help. It's about the kids who are already being left behind in a district that claims all means all. Last month, y'all heard from Megan Wise about the abuse, systemic failure, and this district's refusal to take it responsibility. If you thought those things she described were isolated events, I'm here to tell you it's not. I've witnessed some of it in my own children's school. I've seen the children excluded instead of supported. I've seen the teachers crying in classrooms terrified of what might happen next with no one behind them, including the administration. If this board continues to look the other way, in the fact that these aren't just isolated events, their district policies in action harming students and staff every day. If you keep dismissing the abuse as a training gap while refusing to actually require the training, then you are complicit. You are responsible for the next injury, responsible for the next exclusion, responsible for the next teacher that we are already short of, who walks away because they can't carry the weight of these decisions. I don't want sympathy. I don't want just blanket words to make me feel happy because if you can't tell, I'm not going away. I want action. Because our kids and the staff who show up for them every day deserve more than excuses and just words. They deserve more than the bare minimum. And I want to be clear, if it wasn't between the last two times I've spoken, this isn't a teacher issue, a parent issue, a student issue. This is a policy failure and a leadership failure, and an accountability failure. I am beyond tired of teachers and parents and students and staff being pitted against each other while the system continues to benefit from making each category the other in demonizing them. We should be working together. But I need everyone to pay attention to how this board responds to criticism, to how they are handling the bullying, the toxicity and abuse. Whether it's from a student, administrator, or someone sitting at this very table, because ignoring it, excusing it, or doing anything other than encouraging, or anything other than addressing it is the same as encouraging it. When the time comes, take that knowledge to the polls, no matter which party line it's on.
Thank you. Next item is approval of consent agenda. Have a motion of Ms. Berry and a second of Mr. Mayberry. All in favor? Wait a minute, forgot about the electronics. Please cast your vote. Is everyone satisfied with your vote? Please close your vote. Pass this six oh. Next item, policy monitoring. Dr. Lynn Vetter?
Board, please find in your packet information on executive limitation eight, commitment to accomplishment, accountability, accreditation, and reporting. This executive limitation has one compliance expectation to ensure the director of schools shall not fail to maintain an accountability program. Specifically, CMCSS has a comprehensive strategic planning process which includes using Level One student achievement and Level Two department performance data. In addition to this data, administration meets regularly to formally listen to how performance is perceived by school leaders, stakeholder groups, and department leaders. In Level One, school and districts are expected to meet AMO, which is annual measurable objectives identified for the district based on the ESSA baseline built from the previous year's performance. This district is assessed on student performance in seven areas measured through three different pathways. Each area, pathways, and action plans are listed in the packet. Furthermore, senior leadership team members design annual strategic work based on changes at the state and national levels, as well as feedback from stakeholders at all levels, and other district work that needs to be implemented or improved to accomplish the Level Two requirements. In conclusion, the district is currently working on high school accreditation updates with Cognia and is due to be completed in fall 2026. In fall 2021, CMCSS began the transition to ISO certification for educational organization and in April 2025 was recommended for unconditional approval for the third year in a row. Chairman Griffey, this concludes my update for executive limitation eight.
Is there a motion to accept executive limitation eight? Have one for Mr. Garland. Is there a second? Second for Ms. Bryant. Any discussion? Please open the vote. Is everyone satisfied with your vote? Please close the vote. Pass this six oh. Next item reports. Dr. Lynn Vetter?
I'd like to welcome the communications team of Anthony Johnson, Elizabeth Vincent, and Jessica Goldberg to discuss our goal nine, driving academic support from families through improving our family-friendly instructional resources.
Good evening, board. I want to preface this with two things. One, we're going to give a snapshot of some of this work. It's not all-inclusive, but we wanted to give you a sample. And in fact, on your desk in front of you, you've got Jessica put together folders. She'll talk about that here in a little bit. But this is just going to be a brief overview. And I want to share that this work, I always tell my team, we only exist to serve others and so this is all in collaboration with others. So although we're presenting on it, we want to thank every department, every teacher, every family for their work in partnering with us on this. And so I'm going to turn it over. We're going to talk about three different things. But first, Elizabeth's going to talk a little bit about our parent and guardian survey data from this year.
All right, hello, board. Very glad to be here to talk with you all tonight a little bit about this goal for engaging the public in support of student achievement, which our goal for this year was driving academic support from families through improving family-friendly instructional resources. And I want to share some data, both that informed this goal as well as some data that we continually track as a department year after year, likely will regardless of what our strategic work goal is. So the first two questions that you'll see reflected here are some of the data that informed the creation of this goal and our partnership with other departments. The first question is one that we ask every year on our parent and guardian survey. My child is learning what he or she needs to be prepared for the future. The question goes on to say whether college, career, or the next grade level so that all of our families are included in responding to that question. You can see from our most recent iteration of the survey this spring, we continue to have really strong agreement overall. We're about ninety-two, ninety-three percent agreement among families that students are learning what they need to learn to be prepared for the future. Some of what we looked at that informed the way that we approached this particular strategic work goal wasn't so much about overall agreement, which, you know, we can definitely continue to improve and we strive for that. But overall, the agreement was really strong. What we did see were some gaps among parents' agreement whether they had students that were elementary aged versus in the secondary grades. We did see some gaps there. So that's kind of what informed a lot of this work and I'll go into that a little bit more specifically momentarily. But you can see here generally about ninety-two to ninety-three percent agreement with that statement. Another question that was really important for our work in this goal has to do with resources. This question reads, "I have the resources I need to help my child be prepared for the future." In earlier versions of the parent survey, this question was worded a little bit differently. The question actually read, "I understand my role in supporting my students' education." And you can see where we changed the wording of that question and how it affected the overall agreement. We typically had very high agreement with that statement that families understood their role, but we didn't get a whole lot of information from that question that helped us know how to continue to make improvements. And so we adjusted the wording of that question in the Spring 24 version of the survey to ask more specifically about resources. Do families not only understand their role but have the resources that they need to fulfill that role? And so you can see we've continued to increase. We're also at about ninety-two to ninety-three percent agreement with that statement. We saw a little bit of fluctuation between the fall and the spring. But again, we noticed some gaps between parents' agreement at the secondary and elementary levels which informed the way that our team approached this particular strategic work goal. Some other data points for you that just represent metrics that we continually track year after year and show what we believe are some of the strong gains that result from where we put our focus as a team for the last several years. My child's school keeps me well-informed. When we deployed this survey in its current form for the first time in fall 2020, that was around eighty-nine percent agreement with that statement and we've continued to see increases all the way up to ninety-five percent agreement in the fall, ninety-four percent in the spring among families. And we have been so impressed and encouraged by the work that we see in our schools every day to engage families, to provide them with support. We believe that Parent Square has made a huge difference in terms of the daily communication that families are receiving. You'll hear a little bit more about that from Anthony momentarily. But this is something that we have continued to track year after year and continue to see really strong increases on. Similarly, the question for our work as a district, the school district as a whole, keeps me well-informed. We've also seen that particular question, the agreement on that climb to around ninety-four percent agreement. When we started this question, and I've shared this with you all before, I believe, but something that's important to know about this particular question. When we first started deploying this survey, it was on the heels of the COVID pandemic really kind of ratcheting up in schools and we were communicating with families a lot and excessive amounts, sometimes multiple times per day were we sending district messages to families. And so when we first started tracking this metric for these purposes, we did see agreement with that statement start to go down, which we were actually pretty happy about. We wanted that to level off a little bit because typically the district won't communicate with families on a daily basis. So one of our goals was to find the right balance between how much families hear from the district as a whole, how much families hear directly from their school, which is really who they want to hear from. They want to hear from their child's teacher. They want to hear from their child's leadership. And how much they hear directly from teachers. So we believe that all of these data points are signs that we're getting that balance in the right place. We're continuing to see families feel well-informed. And regarding the resources that we've been working to provide to families through this strategic work goal, I want to share a little bit of the success that we've seen with that specifically. So I mentioned to you all that the thing that really drove us to work toward this particular strategic work effort had to do with the gaps that we were seeing between agreement from elementary families versus agreement from secondary families. While overall agreement was strong, and you can see here on that question, "My child is learning what he or she needs to be prepared for the future." Agreement from elementary families was at ninety-three percent while agreement from our secondary families, our middle and high school families, was at eighty-eight percent. So we wanted to see those gaps close. For the question regarding, "I have the resources I need to support my child's education", again, ninety-three percent overall agreement from elementary families and for secondary families, it was at eighty-nine percent. So you will see reflected in the information that Anthony and Jessica will share with you that the way that we put our focus based on these gaps. And what you can see is that in the Spring 2025 survey, we saw elementary agreement with the question about children learning what they need rose to ninety-four percent and secondary agreement actually increased by two percentage points to close that gap a little bit. So now we're seeing a four-point gap rather than a five-point gap. While one percentage point may not seem like a tremendous amount of gain, when you think about the amount of families that potentially represents, you know, with the survey sample size that we have of about seventeen thousand students being represented, that could be as many as a hundred and eighty families that are potentially seeing a shift in perspective or a shift in greater understanding, greater resources, greater support. And so those incremental changes are really important, either in the positive or the negative. We want to make sure that we're seeing that. I also want to point out something that we're really happy about, which is that we're closing these gaps the right way. Ideally, you don't want to close gaps by seeing one group decrease and the other group increase that they're closer together. You want one group to increase at the top and the other group to increase faster, which is what we're seeing with this particular goal. So we're very happy about that. Similarly, on, "I have the resources I need to support my child's education", elementary at ninety-four percent overall agreement, secondary at ninety percent agreement. We will continue providing updates as we do more of this work next year, but you'll hear a little bit now about Parent Square and the role that Parent Square has played in increasing our reach for families as well as some of the resources we've been working to provide to meet these particular needs. So alternative over to Anthony at this point.
And I want to give a shout out to Elizabeth and her team, Dallas and Jamie. In addition to the data point around that we received seventeen thousand five hundred, a little over that, survey responses, we also allow parents to give open-ended responses. And so that team spends a lot of time going through those and tracking and trending and that helps to inform us too because yes, we ask a simple question, but sometimes within that question, being able to get some more of that information is very helpful, especially when it comes to creating resources. I also just want to acknowledge one thing and I'll give a little bit of my age here by saying this, but when I was in kindergarten in nineteen ninety-two in Chicago, I went to part-time kindergarten and I had a wonderful teacher, Ms. McCoy, so this is not a dig at her, but we had a great time. We learned songs, we learned to color, lots of things. Kindergarten's not like that anymore. Education has changed quite a bit. The rigor is there. And so I want to acknowledge that while we're asking our families and our parents to partner with us, you know, it's challenging and it's a lot different than what many of us grew up. And so by providing these resources, again, the emphasis on family-friendly so they know how to support their child at home, breaking down these standards, some of these complicated concepts. And I think what you'll see is we've really put a lot of focus at secondary and Jessica will share that in trying to help because, I mean, kindergarten's tough enough nowadays, but you get into calculus and all those other things and I'm just as lost as anyone else. So as you all know, this is our, was our second year of implementing Parent Square. One thing that we found with School Messenger, which again, you know, worked great for us, but that was a mass notification system. That's what it did. It sent out mass notifications. There was not the ability for teachers to send out communications. It was just a send it out. There wasn't a way for two-way communications. And so that's what drove us a couple of years ago to looking at a different platform. And we have been really excited with the growth that we've seen, not just in feedback from families, but in just, it's been very encouraging to see the level of engagement. So the next few slides actually come from Parent Square. They, they're really great. They do quarterly reviews with each district they work with to kind of give us a touch point of where we're at compared to other districts. So that's some of the data we're going to look at today. This first slide just shows you, we are using Parent Square, if you can't tell. Two million, almost three million auto notices, direct messages. This, this just gives you a snapshot of all the features that are being used. This next piece is one that we're really proud about. With our previous mass notification system, we had about eighty-five percent contactability. That really bothered me, the fact that on a regular basis, there is about fifteen percent of our families who may not be getting our communication regularly. Very excited to announce that by our spring quarter, technically it was like ninety-nine point six, but the dashboard makes it look really nice and says one hundred percent contactability. And so that's, that's phenomenal. What you're going to see in a few of these slides, there's a blue circle and that's what Parent Square states is a benchmark and that's based upon averages. So we've exceeded their average of ninety-eight point, uh, one-five percent to a hundred percent. The other piece is that if, whether or not you register for Parent Square, you will still get the communications. But the great thing about registering is that then families can customize. So we talk a lot about digest, which means I don't want to get twenty messages a day, which we understand. So I can get it all at one time, or some might want it all at one. So by registering, you can change your feature. So again, we're at seventy-five percent of our families who have registered, or users, parents and guardians, who have actually registered, which is phenomenal, um, compared to some of the, the averages. The next piece is again, reach and deliverability. About sixty percent of our parents and guardians have downloaded the app. The benchmark nationally is forty percent. So we're exceeding that. Very grateful that lots of our families are utilizing the app. And you can see by the chart, the text message, uh, and probably not surprising to anybody in twenty-twenty-five, is the most preferred reach method. This next piece talks about our teachers. And this was kind of going back to what Elizabeth said about, you know, parents at the end of the day, they want to hear directly from the teacher. They don't want to hear me unless it's a snow day. Um, and so being able to, uh, give our teachers with a tool that's easily integrated already with their power school rosters, where they can communicate directly with families. And so the benchmark based upon averages is that about thirty-five percent of teachers, and this is regularly posting, that's national. Uh, we were up to seventy percent. So our teachers have really embraced it. They're using it. We're very appreciative. Now, you might be noticing on this chart that it tends to taper off at the secondary level. Well, there's two things with that. One, kind of that release of control, expecting students to, uh, take a little bit more accountability. But the other piece of that is that oftentimes, as you all know, you know, a teacher can provide a syllabus. You kind of know what's going on the rest of the year. It's not as many of those weekly newsletters, that sort of thing. But where our secondary teachers are using Parents Square a lot is this is direct messages. So this is again, those two-way communications instantly translated into over a hundred target languages. And so, uh, you see more of a use of that at the secondary level. And, um, we were up from our previous quarter up to ninety-three percent of our users are messaging. And then this last piece is talking about parent and guardian interactions. One thing that's great about Parent Square is that it allows us, you know, oftentimes we send a message and we hope that it's well-received by everyone, but we don't always know. With Parent Square, it's kind of like social media. Parents can click that they liked it, that they appreciate the post and it lets us know that they're there. So, uh, the benchmark nationally is that about thirty-two percent of your parents are interacting with, with Parents Square. We are so proud of our community. We are more, about double, uh, that percentage. So about sixty-three percent of our parents are interacting regularly with Parents Square. So that was just a little data, uh, uh, touch point to talk about our implementation of Parents Square. Uh, but next, we're going to kind of revisit some of those pieces that Elizabeth talked about in the survey with creating those resources. And so we'll turn it over to Jessica, who is our guru on that.
Good evening, board. Don't worry, I'm not going to share any more numbers with you. We're going to get into the fun part now. Okay, so we do have really great data. We get a lot of great feedback from our parents, from our teachers, from our students. How do we use that? How do we take what we've been given and then frame our messaging? Create, uh, marketing materials, create resources to then communicate back to our stakeholders to say, we hear what you've asked for and this is what we've put together for you. So I'm going to show you a couple of those highlights here. So as we kind of discussed, I have the resources I need to support my child's education. What we have found is that the primary ways that people really feel the most disjointed are when they're really entering certain grade levels. So when you have a kindergartner who's entering school for the first time and maybe that family has never really had a, a child that's been in public education before. This is their oldest child. And so they don't know anything from what the heck is school cafe? And how do I put money on the account? Or where do I find my bus stop? Or any of those kind of things. So we have created, uh, materials for our kindergarten families that really start with building those foundations and letting them feel connected to the school community. Where we really focused a lot of our efforts, um, because as Elizabeth mentioned, there was that gap between elementary and secondary families feeling that they had resources that they needed to support their child's education. We've really created these navigating your future brochures. And so when we put marketing materials together, just, um, and you have these in your packets that you can look at, what we like to do is create one source of information that has all of our really rich content jam-packed in there and then break those pieces out through smaller communications throughout the year as well. So if you are a family who is short on time, but you want to have that resource available to read and digest on your own, you have that packet of information that's available to you, either in print, online. We create videos for it. But then we also take it and we take certain pieces and share it with you when it's necessary throughout the year. So making sure we always have that multi-platform approach to communicating with our families. So you'll see in your packets and you'll see on here, um, we have a navigating your future for middle school students. So when we have our fifth grade families who are entering middle school for the first time, what, what do you mean when you say my child's going to be changing classes? What do you mean that I'm going to have six different teachers who are going to be communicating with me? How am I going to understand band and extracurricular and co-curricular opportunities that are available to me? We have those resources available in here. And even at the middle school level, we start talking about career and technical education as well, because our middle schoolers are already starting to develop their aptitudes and interests for understanding the career and technical education opportunities that are going to be available to them in high school. Moving into the high school navigating your future, and I will say, speaking from experience, even working in the district, when my daughter started high school two years ago and someone said, ready graduate? I'm like, okay, I'm going to be honest. I know I've heard those words before, but I'm not a hundred percent sure how it's going to apply to my daughter. What does that mean for me? When we started talking about graduation requirements, I thought, oh goodness, I've got four more years until my daughter graduates. How am I going to make sure that she is ready to graduate? What are the graduate, graduation requirements in Tennessee? And so making sure our families have that information when they walk through the doors the very first day of high school and even beforehand, to really understand what they need to be doing to help their, their child prepare for the next four years. Um, our instruction and curriculum department has done a wonderful job creating this parent academic resource hub. This is available through a link on the district website as well. So even if you're not just worried about entering a different grade level, you have families who kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade that have the availability at their fingertips to be able to see things like content for the entire year, pacing guides, scope and sequence, and my personal favorite, videos that are even available. So maybe I haven't done third grade math in a hot minute and maybe it looks a little different than when I went to third grade, but you can get on the parent academic resource hub and look up third grade, look up math. And there's videos that are available to say, oh, this is how we divide now. Like this is what dividing means. Okay, I can help you with this. And then be able to help your child walk through their homework a little bit easier. It's giving that confidence back to the caregivers to understand that they do have the ability to help support their child's education. Okay, my child is learning what he or she needs to be prepared for the future. Obviously, depending on the age level of your child, that's going to look different and mean different, something different for every single family. So we discussed a little bit last year about our pre-K and our early literacy programs. And we still have all of those resources available and continue to add to them on the district website. So from birth to pre-K, we are already providing families with the tools and resources that they need to feel confident in instilling that love of learning and that love of reading for their children. And then especially as well, those milestone trackers. So if they think that an intervention might be necessary, we want to make sure that we're providing those resources and materials as well, so that we can help children from the very beginning that may need a little bit extra support, support, excuse me. Um, one that I am personally passionate about is our CTE programs that we help our students develop and understand. So our career technical education, as I mentioned, already gets, um, introduced at the middle school level. And we've created, um, these microsites that are also linked to the district website. So you can find them, um, whether it be for the academies of CMCSS or the thirty-five different career and technical education pathways that we offer across our eight traditional high schools. And so students can go in here with their parents and explore all of the different pathways that are available. There's videos on there. There's different career opportunities that are on there. There are universities and technical schools that offer, um, programs in those different career pathways. So students at any point, if they say, you know what, I might be interested in aviation, they can come onto this website. They can see what's available to them. And we can already have those conversations at home, talking with our students about what they need to be doing to be prepared for those different futures. Um, this is just an example, again, as I mentioned, of the thirty-five different career and technical education pathways that we offer. And these pathways are all listed in the pathways brochures. They're available online. We share them on social media. We really use, again, that multi-platform approach of really sharing all of that information with our students. And as I said, this one is the one that I'm personally passionate about, because that's what we started working on first. And so we have the data, oh, this is numbers. Sorry. I, I am going to share numbers with you. Uh, so this is the data to prove that what we're communicating is working. Um, and so you can see, um, at our TCAT dual enrollment, so our early technical college, is something that we start promoting in middle school and then especially for our freshmen and sophomores to make sure that they're prepared and have what they need to be, um, applicable and, and be able to apply for the early technical college their junior and senior year. And you can see that when we started, um, really pushing the, the marketing and communication for early technical college, it was in that twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And you can see the jump in just two years of the amount of students that are applying and, and joining our ETC program. And I do want to say that that, a large, large, large part of that is really just the effort that our ETC leaders and our administration has, um, put into really recruiting and sharing the message of ETC as well. You can see, um, CTE pathways versus other pathways. When we really, uh, commit ourselves to a certain strategy and communicate regularly with our families and with our students, they understand and they have an interest in what we're talking about. So CTE pathways versus other pathways. You can see over fifty percent of our students actually end up choosing a CTE pathway in high school versus maybe an academic or fine arts pathway. And so our students are really needing to have this information shared with them, because obviously a lot of them are choosing to, um, choose the CTE pathway. Uh, my school and the district keep me well informed. Again, we, we understand from, um, a family level that families, they do want that information like a good snow day. No one's going to, you know, hate on a snow day message. But we also want to know that what's happening inside of our schools is keeping my child safe, is helping them learn and is keeping them engaged and preparing them for their future. And so you can see, um, these are just several examples of what we share good, what we call good news stories on our social media. So keeping our parents and our caregivers informed that good things are happening in our schools. You can see, um, our health science students are earning industry certifications so that when they graduate, they are already have, have certifications that they can go and take right into the workforce. You can see that our, um, aviation students are already perform, performing solo flights while still in high school. And you can see that, again, our ETC students are already having internships with local contractors and local businesses so that they're preparing themselves, um, for work after graduation. But not only are we sharing the good news stories, we're helping our families feel better informed and have, um, more confidence going into the school and being able to ask questions. So something like our parent teacher conferences, for example. Parent teacher conferences happen at every grade level. So you may typically think of an elementary school parent teacher conference and you think, okay, I'm going to go in and I'm going to see a folder full of work of my child. Well, we really want to encourage families to go in at middle school and high school as well, because we still want them to be involved. But sometimes when the coursework is a little more rigorous and they think, I don't really know if I'm going to be able to ask the right questions, we even provide some of the questions, um, to our families to say, hey, if you don't know what you should ask, maybe you could ask some of these questions as well. Help them feel connected, help them feel like they're welcome in the community, in the school community, to be able to stay well-informed. And finally, of course, we're always going to talk about it, Power School and Parent Square. Um, that is the number one way that we will tell families that they can stay informed. Um, and we give them the resources and the tools to make sure that they're connected. Um, we remind new families all of the time, if they haven't yet been connected, to sign up for Parent Square, to sign up for Power School. And, um, we're just really excited about going into the next school year and really continuing to grow and evolve the communication strategies that we already have and develop new ones as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
You have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
You're allowed to ask questions already? I jumped again. Okay, so, um, we, uh, just a couple of questions. There are seven, a little over seventeen thousand responses. How many families are represented out of that?
So that, that one is a little challenging. We've tried to get to the root of that because obviously we have many families that have more than one student. And so, um, but the best way that we look at it is how many individual parents and guardians we have in our system, which is I think right roughly around forty-two thousand. Of course, not all live at the same home, uh, that sort of thing. So we're, we use a percentage. I think we landed at, was it thirty-eight percent? So about a thirty-eight percent response rate, which is exceeds industry standard and, and compared to, we used to have about a ten to fifteen percent response rate. We've been really thrilled with that response rate.
Yeah, that's, that's good. Um, another question I have, as a parent with two kids that are very active, one of the things that I get really frustrated with is I feel like I have to download an app for everything. Them being in sports, I've got the band app, I've got the Haygot app, I've got the Team Reach app, I've got GroupMe. And so I think it, the important messages get lost because I don't even know where to look for all the things. So is there a reason that the schools aren't using this for the extracurricular activities?
I'm, I'm looking over and smiling at Dr. Luna Vedder. Um, so I can, a little bit of context, when we started Parent Square in year one, our goal was just to get everybody familiar with it. Year two, we really pushed into more of a strongly encouraging that schools utilize it for all of their communications. So no more class dojo, that sort of thing was strongly encouraged. Moving into year three, and with the blessing of Dr. Luna Vedder at the December principals meeting, it is the expectation next year that everybody uses Parent Square for all of their communications like that. We totally understand that there are things, and I've mentioned this before, like class dojo, that the points. And we know that there are schools that, Parent Square doesn't offer that yet. I'm sure they'll probably buy them at some point. But, so they might want to use it for the points, but we do want it to be streamlined. That is the entire concept of Parent Square. It was founded by parents to say, I don't want to download all these different apps. I want it all in one place. So that is something we're working towards and I appreciate you bringing that, that up.
Well, that, uh, I know that some of the athletics aren't officially ran by the school. I forget the correct language, but if, if it's not an official school program like baseball for Montgomery Central is not sanctioned, is that the word?
Yeah, if it's a non-sanctioned, we wouldn't be able to grant access. But for anything that is sanctioned or school-based, absolutely, uh, Parents Square. Even if they're not, so we have volunteer coaches, even if they're a volunteer coach, we can add them on. But it, it would only be for, for ones that are sanctioned by the school. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Mayberry? I just wanted to say, as a parent as well, uh, look, Parent Square, you definitely do stay well-informed. So just want to put that out to you guys. Thank you so much. You guys have been doing a great job there and the participation rate's amazing. I also want to say, to give you guys some feedback, the TCAT numbers, man, I'm real proud to see that. As we've said in the past, and I've, I've heard said to this board and I've repeated, that TCAT is the best-kept secret. To see the amount of people who apply for TCAT makes my heart happy. Also having a nephew just graduated last year or the year before, um, from, from, uh, Clarksville High, who was in TCAT, he's about to graduate this fall from, uh, TCAT, and then my niece as well is there. So that just makes me really happy. Just want to give that feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to just echo what, uh, Jessica said. You know, kudos to Ms. Brown and, and Dr. Bailey. They are huge advocates. We're just there to support them. But I'm, I'm so thrilled to hear that. And I will say, one of the biggest frustrations for me always is when I hear, well, I didn't, I didn't know y'all did CT or I don't know that you had a virtual school. And so it's my campaign to make sure everybody who lives in a five-hundred-mile radius knows that we have all of these programs. So we're going to keep pushing out the word and appreciate y'all's support.
See any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next time, FourCamel School liaison officer comments. Don't see her tonight. C M C E A representative.
Good evening. I'm just going to read what I was going to say last month because I wasn't here, because we had tornado sirens going off in North Clarksville, so I was stuck there for a while. So if these seem a little late, that's because of it. So I just, uh, wanted to thank a few people and acknowledge a few people who, um, are very responsive during the school year and that I email numerous and numerous times, to the point where I even feel bad for them. But, um, I need to acknowledge them at the end of each year and thank them. So the first one is Dr. Luna Vedder and Dr. Kazi. Um, they meet with us monthly to address our concerns, so I want to thank them for doing that. We truly appreciate the opportunity to have our members' concerns openly discussed and directly addressed. I want to thank Melissa I- I want to thank Melissa Izat especially. I email Melissa all the time and the director of elementary, middle and high schools for always being responsive to our numerous emails and answering them as efficiently and effectively as possible. Thank you to the school board members for understanding and following PECALAW and approving a team to collaborate po- collaborate policy updates and changes on their behalf. The PECALAW requires collaborative conferencing and we are so appreciative of the work between the board-appointed team and the professional educators appointed by CMCEA. We trust that these teams will keep policy running smoothly in the years to come. Please keep the full plates of our educators in mind this summer as the district continues to plan for the next school year. Our educators are the ones in the classroom managing numerous students with different needs and behaviors. At once while maintaining a learning environment that is conducive for all students. Educators need policies and procedures to be implemented that support them and alleviate their burden, not add to it. And I just want to say that Parent Square is something that helps alleviate our burden and not adds to it. I was a little apprehensive at first, just because I'm old and anything new. You know, I'm like, oh, I don't want to do this. But after I learned Parent Square and I learned how to use it and. Yeah, I thought, you know, this is absolutely wonderful, because it just makes my job so much easier communicating with parents and. Parents communicate with us as well, some more than others, but I mean, it is, it's very useful. And I've said it before, and I will continue to say it, CMCSS is a great school district with effective educators. And I'm positive that with a little rest over the summer, we will be more than ready to take on the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Thank you.
PET representative.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Luna Vedder. I have to poke fun at Anthony, because when he said he was a kindergartner in nineteen ninety-two. I was beginning my teaching career at Moore Magnum in nineteen ninety-three. So just going back to the age there, let's let's not talk about age. So yes, I hope everyone's having a great summer. And just to let you know, I remind you that there will be a reading of the Declaration of Independence, July fourth at the courthouse, nine o'clock. Don't miss that. And if you're coming, you might want to park your car a couple of streets over, because. There's a possibility that the cannons going off will set your car alarms off, because that's happened before. But also just to remind you, Constitution Camp, teachers, we never quit our learning. Constitution Camp is gonna be happening in Brentwood, Tennessee, July fourteenth this summer. And I think I've been drafted to teach. So if you're interested in coming, uh, in a class of mine, you're welcome to do it. Thank you.
Commissar, county commissioners.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, um, the presentation on the Parent Square app, that's that's pretty, pretty neat technology there. My wife was a substitute teacher years ago in this school district and I I I could just see the benefits of that from a teacher's perspective and from a parent's perspective too. Um, so I really uh applaud you guys for doing that. Also, just wanted to um say again, you know, TCAT, some of these other programs we have here are some really amazing programs. We got some really great folks that run them. I have personal experience with them. Um, especially Ms. Brown, can't say enough good things about her. She really cares about her students. So anything we can do to support you guys, anything y'all can do, um, that's that's quite an amazing program over there. And I apologize, I gotta run out of fire committee meeting every time we have these, so I'm gonna have to walk out, but thank you so much.
Commissar for board members. Mr. Garland.
All I could say, Anthony, is wow, that was a beautiful presentation. I let your team know that I really appreciated it. That's why I didn't say nothing, I didn't ask no questions. You know, uh, over the years that I've been here, you know, we have seen the system grow, seen the s- seen the district grow. And every year, it seemed to get stronger and stronger and stronger, no matter what people say. I know everybody have their own opinions and uh we we respect everyone's opinion. And we don't want to just come here and be rubber stampers, but we do want to know, want you to know that we really, I mean, I really believe. That we have a strong system. Um, I've been to other systems. I listened to people talk about how their children are treated in their system. And when I look over the years and how we have come forward, come up. Uh, I can say that I am very proud of the work that the team is doing here. And I thank the board for just being uh being responsible enough to allow you to do your job. Because see, in some places, you don't get a chance to do your job. You got boards trying to dictate what you're supposed to be doing, but I thank God that we have a have a system here. Where we have a team in place that can get the job done and you do it every year and it seemed to go higher and higher and higher. Thank you, Dr. Luna, for the work, the teamwork. Thank you.
Ms. Bryant.
Thank you for the presentation. I always love the presentations, because we get insight on things that we wouldn't normally have an opportunity to learn about. And I think as a as a board member, a failing new board member, I'll say I have, before becoming a board member, I had a lot of preconceived notions about. How the board runs and what happens in our schools and you have a parent perspective and then you have a board member perspective and then the teachers and the county commissioners, everybody has their own thoughts about how things are. And so this this kind of um gives us insight on how things are ran. So thank you. Those are always very helpful. I also want to thank Amanda and Suzanne for coming in and speaking. It's um. It's a privilege that we have to be able to come in and speak to the school board and I want to encourage you guys to, you know, continue encouraging others to come. I think it's really important that we get involved as parents. So thank you for coming. Um, we're we're not perfect as a school board. That's why why I ran. I know that there's always things that we can do to improve. And so. Um, thank you guys for coming, showing up during the summer and being engaged parents.
See no more. Commissar for director of schools.
Good evening, board members. Even though the traditional calendar year shows that we are out for summer, the work in preparation continues across the district for students. Our traditional summer learning camps and the extended school year are all off to a great start. We are also in the middle of hosting High School One-O-One, and that's for eighth graders who are transitioning to ninth grade, to give them a little bit of a jump start. Last week, we also had a special STEM summer camp that was held at two locations called Camp Invention. And that was a huge success. Activities were designed around science, technology, engineering and math that were truly engaging for the campers. Also, I I would be remiss to not give a huge shout out to the teams who are currently in their busy seasons. Such as the building custodians, facilities, the landscaping crews, our technology team. Who go above and beyond, behind the scenes during the summer months to ensure that we are prepared for students in August. Mr. Griffey, this concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Vedder. This meeting is adjourned.